On a couple of retirements that occurred within the non-instructional group, one position, those was not replaced and also reflects a projected amount for the CSEA contract negotiations. In this draft, we do have the five retirements that were accepted previously by the Board of Education. We are putting in right now an estimate to replace all five of those. And for the purposes of that, we use the step four of the FTA contract. Four of the individuals that retired were also eligible for retirement status through the FTA contract, so we've included that as well.
Jen, did say FTE include health benefits?
No, that's, that will be separate.
Okay, thanks.
Let's see. So salary and benefits, a couple of things to point out here, the social security amount, which is currently up 3.2 percent, that will vary. If you added more staff, that goes up at 7.65 percent of those salaries. New York State teachers retirement system is budgeted at 10.63 percent, which is the amount of district with O on 2018-19 salaries. That's paid in September, October, and November of 2019. Looking ahead, the rate for 19-20 salaries is actually going to decrease to 8.86 percent, so that'll be a little bit of a savings for us in the subsequent budget year. In the area of group health insurance, I want to point out that this reflects about $140,000 worth of savings through the termination of the independent health plans. You may recall we did that at the last, end of the last school year. We were able to have everyone voluntarily switch over into the new cross-bush shield plans offered by the county, Schott County School District Plan. It's also interesting that we had some staff leave who had been here a little bit with family plans and replace them by hiring those that needed single plans. And we found that a number of the single individuals are staying on their parents' insurance up to age 26, which is allowed under the new federal insurance laws. So we've seen a little bit of savings the last couple of years, but more so this year because of that. Schott County School District Plan went up 4 percent, which was a good, good percent for there. In the past, we've been ranging between 4 and 10 percent, so far as we'd be able to Equipment materials and supplies, not a huge increase here so far, up 42,000 overall. We did mention along the way to the board, and I'll mention it again, that we did take a walk through the building. We had a maintenance myself. I met with each building principal during the summer, kind of talking about what the needs might be for equipment, classroom furniture, those kinds of things. This winter, we've also reviewed the budgets with the building administrators to again talk about those things individually at the building, what kind of things they may need or we should be considering as part of the process. And we're still reviewing that with the building administrators. My office has also begun the process of going through the building submissions to make sure things are coded in the correct categories and that things haven't been doubled or not added correctly and those kinds of things. The area of contractual expense in BOSI services were up 664,000. As you can see, the bulk of that is BOSI services. This draft is about $120,000 less than the BOSI's draft I provided last meeting. We continue to discuss alternative education placements with middle school and high school principals and also special education placements with Director of Special Ed, Mrs. Sparrow. In the area of contractual expense, that would include things like field trips, conferences, maintenance, and custodial lines, including utilities. The next two slides are updates to the major changes of BOSI services over $5,000. Don't even really go through those. They continue to flux and I know there's going to be changes to this as we go, so it's more for information than anything. I did want to point out on this slide, the capital project, I show a decrease of 119,000, which is a decrease over the 18-19 payment that we had to make for the BOSI's capital project. You may recall it was a three-year commitment on the district. First year, we paid 396,000. Second year, we paid 357,000. And this year, we're projected at 238,000. So it's diminished over time. There is BOSI's aid that's paid against that, and that would also be diminishing over those three-year period. Debt service and interfund transfers, big change here, a decrease of $2.2 million, which is a reflection of Division 2000 principal interest coming off the books. This does include adding back in the projections for the debt that will have on the project that's going to be starting here in another month or so. Interfund transfers, I've kept that the same. That's a $15,000 transfer to our federal fund to cover the difference between the aid we receive and the actual cost for handicap programs. This budget draft, we are using the estimated tax cap calculation that I have thus far, which I think is pretty close to the final. We're also using the state aid, using the governor's proposal from January 2019. And we're hopeful that the state legislatures will have an on-time budget for us for April 1st with the final state aid amounts. Taking a look at a summary of revenue, again, a big decrease in state aid, the bulk of which is the building aid coming off the books in 1920. Minor increase at local sources federally, which is our Medicaid aid, kept it current, consistent in this draft. We're looking at possibly adjusting that. The appropriated fund balance that was applied in the 2018-19 school year was 1 million. I've still got that number in this draft. And our tax levy, as you can see, is up about 871,000 from 1819. At the bottom, I included the last few years, a comparison of state aid versus the tax levy percent. You'll see this change as we go. Hopefully, the state aid will come up with the final state budget, and our tax levy should come down as we work through the process of changing the appropriation lines. Just a quick slide here that shows the revenue changes over $5,000. Again, building aid is down 2.28 million, that's driving the whole process there. Budget cash, we still have to comply with administrative cap. If the budget were to be defeated twice by the voters, we need to not exceed the administrative percentage of the prior year's budget, which is 13.75 percent, where we currently sit 287,000 below that. The overall tax cap, as you may recall, is replaced by the tax levy limit. If you exceed the tax levy limit, you would have to have a 60 percent or greater. In terms of where we are with the tax cap today, our first goal in this budget process is to get us to the cap. You may want to know why we do this. It prevents the need for the 60 percent majority vote, which across the state, we have seen a very minimal amount of districts even attempting that. And of those that have, many of those don't pass. And it also ensures that the district taxpayers remain eligible for a tax cap compliant rebate that you receive from the state. Once we get to the point of being at the tax cap, then it'll be up to the Board of Education to decide at what level you wanted to continue with the process or to set your final levy. And again, this does not include potential staffing, because we haven't had any yet. So our maximum tax levy percent increase this year, based upon the state formula, is 2.95 percent, which would allow us a maximum tax levy increase of 474,000. Our current tax levy of 16,930,000 is 390,000 over that number. So that would mean to get to the cap before we discuss anything beyond that, we would need to reduce expenditures, increase our revenue projections, or increase our use of appropriate fund balance to the amount of 397,000. So in summary, top half is expenditure side, bottom half is revenue side. Essentially, we're at a budget right now of a proposal of $31,81,560, which is a 4.19 percent decrease over 2018-19. Just for points of information, 1 percent on the levy. To reduce 1 percent on the levy, it would be about 161,000. If you reduce a dollar in the town of Pomford on the tax rate, it's about 129,000, which is about the number that we have there. Any questions?
Any questions for Jen? Yeah. So the appropriated fund balance at one, 2 million, 2.5?
Yep.
And I believe we're down to 950, not 100?
Two years ago, it was 950. Last year, it was 1 million.
Okay, all right. What would be the effect of what you're discussing here as far as the tax levy to add to the appropriated fund ba, to the appropriated amount to 1.3?
Any dollar you add to the appropriated, increase it, would decrease the levy by the same amount. So every dollar up, levy goes down a dollar.
Okay. So we can appropriate with the amount of fund balance that we currently have and successfully reduce taxes?
Yeah. There's two ways to do it. One would be that. The other would be to go back through the line items and really bring them tighter to what they may actually be at the end of the day and stuff. Yes.
And do you feel comfortable using 300,000 out of our fund balance that we currently have?
Additional?
Putting in is addition? Would you prefer to answer that about a month? No. Because I'd like to see what the state aid is first. Because if they do something that we're not expecting, then that might change my answer. But certainly, that's something we can look at.
Any other questions? Yeah, Ms. Pomford?
Maybe a question more for Mr. Sartizio. When we look at this budget, is there anything that you would highlight in terms of a change in instructional or program investment or support that this is, or is this really just kind of keeping us with the programs and what we're doing to, you know, this year and to next year?
So in this version of the budget, the answer is no, not yet. We, the recommendations for staffing will really answer your question more.
Okay.
So maybe the next version or the version after that will be a little bit closer to giving me the opportunity to talk about the support systems that we want to put in place and how we can support those supports through staffing requests.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Okay, excellent. Boy, thanks, Jen.
Very nice job.
Did anyone miss any particular slide from previous presentations that wasn't offered this time by Mr. Forbes?
I did have the original one. Let's not rehash that in public session. If there's interest, I can.
I didn't hear anyone say the name of the.
The color was not.
Yeah. That's your shirt. That's wonderful. Thanks, Jen. I do appreciate that. Okay. Then, okay, so then we have President's Report. So when we had our budget, our board retreat, we had talked about a number of things. We had a presentation on MTSS and in our last board meeting. And we also talked about having Ms. Slagel send around the committee, screening committee, what have you, the community committee, from the hiring of Mr. Sartizio. And she was kind enough to send that out. I know I sent some information and Ms. Paul Fortna sent some information to board members. We have then that one issue that we talked about at the board retreat regarding the portrait of a graduate and where we might try to go with something of that nature relative to presentation, inviting people to that. Essentially, and we talked about that, list of folks who were involved previously and then the names that folks might generate themselves. And also talked about, you know, what we might try to do and how we might try to present that publicly, whether it be at a forum, what that forum process might involve. And so what I wanted to do is really kind of touch base with everybody at this point. We've got, under the board policies, we have different options for creating committees. We have the opportunity for the board to create a committee or the president to commit to create a committee. And that would involve board members strictly. We have the opportunity for the board to create a, that the board would request that the president appoint a temporary committee consisting, again, of just simply board members. None of them, none of these committees could have more than three board members associated with it. With respect to a temporary committee, the president is an ex officio member of that committee. So essentially, you could have two board members and then I would serve as ex officio. The third route is that the board could authorize an advisory committee for the purpose of enlisting opinions and counsel of the general public. And that committee would be appointed by the Board of Education. And so that's really where that, if you wanted to go the route of an advisory committee, that would be where we could use the names that are generated, have been generated and are being generated. So, so you've got different routes you could take. I know we've got the standing committee of the policy committee, but that's very specific in terms of what the policy committee does. I might offer that, though, as a route that the members of the policy committee could serve in that function and come back to the board with proposals. You could have separately appointed individuals. However, folks might want to go relative to that. My concern, I just expressed this, is that we've got the three standing committees and I don't know facilities where they would be. Audit, I think, is going to be busy. So I would have concerns about time for folks, but, you know, certainly whatever anyone would want to do. And then, of course, you've got the advisory committee. I'd really like to get some ideas about how we might approach this and actually look at, you know, that particular item of portrait of a graduate and how we might at least begin to tackle that idea.
So, let me ask you this.
Yes.
Again, to Mr. Sartizio, is he working with that group?
Absolutely.
All right. What do you feel most comfortable with the suggestions that Mike just gave us?
I don't think I really have a level of comfort greater for one over the other. I'm hearing Mr. Bobstein talk about the commitment that board members have to their other committees and not wanting to overload them. We're essentially talking about an ad hoc committee. Is that correct, his description of it? To work on a very specific project. I think my comfort level really would be grounded in working with folks who really are interested in this process forward rather than some folks who, and I understand this in any group, who are, want to be part of it but maybe not necessarily need it. If that makes sense to you. I mean, if there's board members that are sitting here thinking, you know, I'm really excited about this. I want to move forward. I want to help with this. Great. If there's board members there sitting there thinking, I want to move forward with this, and I know these people who I think would be interested as well, and that goes more to the advisory piece. Do I think eventually it makes sense to have an advisory group when we're trying to determine our vision? Sure. Sure. That goes back to some of the strategic planning stuff we talked about previously. So I don't know if I have a comfort level one way or the other. Sorry to run out of points on that.
I hear sort of the advisory piece on you. And, you know, to that, I would think that you're going to be part of each meeting. So, you know, again, to that, you would then run the meeting to the point of creating an agenda and notes and, you know, being, being the one in charge of steering this group.
I would anticipate that I would, I certainly would be responsible for working with the committee on developing an agenda, yes. I don't want this work to be, whether it's me or anyone else, an individual's work. Now, this is really, this is really about the future of our district, the education of our district, where it makes sense to, to, again, have a committee, advisory or otherwise. And in terms of, you know, who takes the minutes and whatnot, I think you can look through that as a, as a team, who's ever on that thing.
And did you say this, and I just missed it? The advisory committee is only the community members or also?
It's not clear. The Board of Education recognizes that it may be necessary to authorize advisory committees, enlisting opinions and counsel of the general public. Such committees shall be appointed by the Board of Education. The board has the right to accept, reject, or modify all or any part of the committee recommendation. So I think you could have board members. You can't have more than three, though.
So, Mr. Bobstein, just a question. Are we, we talked about a lot of things on the retreat night.
Yeah.
So, so is this the group that is creating the portrait of a graduate? Or is this the group that is defining our process for how we get to that? Because to me, that's kind of two different, two different things. Do we need to have a working group to say, we want to do these public sessions and what?
I think that would be, that process would actually make more sense. I mean, essentially, one thought would be, and that's why I proposed, you know, looking at like the policy committee, but it could be in a mixture of anyone. But essentially, it would be a committee of three board members who would come together, make a number of recommendations to the board about how maybe to proceed, which could very well include at that point the advisory committee. Because that seemed to be where we were headed the night of the retreat. But I think where I think we're stuck is, okay, well, how do you get through that process so that the board can make an intelligent decision about, yeah, you know, we like this process? Or we'd like to see, okay, that's an idea, but we'd like to see these kinds of changes. Send the committee back to make another go at it, to come back to the full board with a proposal that might be acceptable. But essentially, to try to move the process along would be the thought.
Right.
Because I think for us to create an advisory committee at this point without any really, any knowledge about, well, what do we want that advisory committee to do?
Right. I agree. I don't know that we have a charter to hand off to that advisory committee and say, you know, here's, here's the task and here's the objective. So I feel like we have some pre-work that needs to happen.
I think that's fair.
I guess, you know, with all due respect, I don't believe that this is really a function or, in order truly to be effective, that the board should be involved. And I've always stated this for many years now, was that I feel we should use our administrative team to research things such as this. And for them to make determinations and then come back to us with a discussion, not a report per se, but to have a discussion, and then get their perspective on, you know, the portrait of a graduate, what we want here. These are things that I hate to say in the past, that has happened and has gone through the, gone through the administrative end. I think they have a better feeling of what's the pulse of our school district. I think they know with the state requirements changing yearly and so on, what's being asked of them and their staff. And I would like to just perhaps, yes, I think the board should get involved, but I think that the information in the committees or whatever should come from our superintendent and our administrative staff and then come to the board. And then after hearing what they have to say, I think we'll have a clearer picture of what we would like to see of our graduates in the future. I'm not too sure that as a board member, being on a committee, and I don't know how many other people, community, whatever, we're not going to truly be that effective. I think we can identify what we wish. And I think it would be more of an advantage for us to use our administrators and then come to the board, angle that approach and figure out the other way. So.
Sure. So, Mr. Jim Broon, in that model, what I foresee is that we utilize the administrative team, including me, to gather information from our community about their wants, thoughts, and needs. Compile that information, come back to the board and say, this is what we discovered. This is where, this is some of our areas of strengths and weaknesses. And it might lead us to further direction. We might hear, everything's great.
Right. And I'm sure that your administrators here every day from the community, different things that they feel are very satisfied with and some things that they feel we need to perhaps strengthen. And coming from that angle, then having a discussion with the board, then is when we can get a hold of us to, you know, fully understand what we wish and I think it would just make a better scope of what we're trying to do.
Well, that's why my question led to Mr. Sartizio at the very beginning, because it was basically on the same lines. Mr. Jim Broon spoke in one place to using administration and having a pulse as to changing needs in the school and our kids' needs to, you know, what the state is requiring. So, yeah, I would say, you know, much to what Ms. Fortner said, you know, that would sort of create the charter, the charge as to what we were going to be asking community members. And, you know, to be quite honest, that's why I didn't turn any names in, because I didn't know what to ask these people they were going to be requested to do. I've got the five names. You know, I would like to, as a courtesy, call them before I turn it over to the school and say this.
Yeah, that would be the intention, but that's great. Yeah.
I'm feeling along the same lines. I think that the pulse of the school, like Mr. Jim Broon said, is definitely within the administration. But also, the more people that have involvement within the school district, I think the better you're going to understand what the pulse is. So you have to really look across the scope of teachers, aides, you know, staff, you know, everybody, to get a pulse of what, what we are looking at in regards to this. So I think that that's an important piece to it. We have to make sure that we cover, we cover the canvas of everybody prior to we coming together and saying, okay, now, this is what we, this is the information that we got. And therefore, you know, then from that point, my question is from that point, I said we get the information from the administration, and we have it and we discuss it. So this is what we're looking at. From that point, then we go to forming a, another committee, I said, I guess, if you call it it. That's what we're looking at.
Is that what you would envision in this one?
And you have many different forms.
Well, I guess my question was, would the advisory committee then come off of that? I don't know. Yeah. I don't think we know.
Well, the presentation we had this evening, guidance and that, I think is an important piece to what we're talking about. And so, you know, I think that information will be gathered, you know, again, by the superintendent through administration.
Ms. Geng? Yeah, I mean, I sort of didn't really, I was, my initial inclination was sort of an advisory committee that kind of gave a sense of what community members, parents think they want to get out of the school, or what they want their students, children, grandchildren, you know, whatever. What they sort of want for their students as they graduate. So I wasn't really thinking from the perspective that Mr. Jim Broon talked about, which I think is interesting and totally makes sense. And maybe it is some combination of those two things. But again, I think like Ms. Fortner said, we have to sort of, we have to figure out what that. that, what it is we're asking ourselves and our administrators and, potentially our community members to be doing. So maybe it is initially for the policy committee for us to sort of think about what that process is and what our next steps are, sort of outline those for the rest of the board to, and maybe for the administrators to consider.
Ms. Paul Ford?
I think, you know, whether we start with the administrators or we start with the policy committee, the administrators are definitely critical, I think, in helping us understand where we are, you know, Mr. Jim Broon, what you said, what are the, what things are, is the state, you know, mandating, what are those types of things? But I think the community, and when I think about the community, I think about local employers, what are they looking for in our graduates, college admissions, you know, I think, you know, getting some of that input to marry up with what are the mandates, what are those types of things? So I see those two things as pretty equally important inputs. So how we get those things to come together and who drives that, I think, is what we need to figure out. So again, is that the administrators developing an approach for collecting that information? Is it the policy committee? I don't feel strongly, you know, where it starts, but I think we need to have a plan that gets those inputs.
Mr. Aldrich?
I think that I've always had a difficult time quite understanding exactly where this whole, where the board fits in this whole thing. And I think that, you know, hate to admit it, you know, Mr. Jim Broon, we don't know your calendar very well, but you nailed it. You nailed it today, okay? And I think that really it's, it's really not up to us to determine what the graduate looks like. And I think that that's administration. And I, you know, I really don't have a problem with having an advisory committee from the community. I think that it does a couple of things. I think that there's a tremendous amount of knowledge out there. I think that there's a lot of employers, a lot of professionals who can help the administration determine what they want from people who have walked across the state to get me the diploma. I think that it adds a community involvement to this, this whole process and it gives the, gives the community more of a voice, more of a belief that this is the right thing to do. I think that it also takes some people who have been critical of the school district and maybe give them an opportunity to come up with solutions rather than just rehashing problems. But I don't think that it's quite the board's position to define what, what a graduate should look like. I think that, again, this administration and our knowledge, the full-time people involved in the implementation of our, of our students, and they would have a better understanding of that through your work. And then utilize people in the community to solidify that.
Does everyone see this as an important thing already? I mean, I'm not here to add, so.
I'm sorry. With all due respect, Mr. Aldrich, I think I have to disagree, and I know I'm new to the seat, but, you know, I see the Board of Education as the steward of the district and that the students are the output and, you know, the product that we're delivering to the community. And I think that that is an important role that the board plays in saying, you know, what does that look like? What are we defining as our standards and what are we working with the administrators to make sure we achieve? I think the administrators are a critical component, but I think the board has a significant ownership to defining what students look like that are coming out of our district.
Let me ask this then. So what I'm hearing generally is that we'd like some ideas from Mr. Surtisio. So here becomes the question, just to, just to give some form to this. So Chris and I meet with Jeff on agenda items. So, I mean, we could go that route. I mean, that we talk with Jeff, get Jeff's ideas, so on, how do you want to approach this? And, you know, can you bring this back to the board? But essentially, put it on our agenda, that we do want to try to do something with respect to this. And the reason I ask the questions, everyone view this as being something important and that's something we want to try to provide for. So we could go, take advantage of Lisa being so interested and use the policy committee because it's me, Chris, and Lisa, Paul Fortna, I have the policy committee, you know, or her, you know? We just say, Jeff, okay, come on back, you know, with your ideas. But I think if we, any of those things, we just need to kind of put a framework on it. It's just as simple as, yeah, we really need to hear about this. Could somebody get back to us? So, policy committee is Mike, Christine, and Lisa? And Lisa, yep. So, that could happen at, or be before or after an agenda meeting? Oh, yeah. No, it would be a separate, it'd be a separate deal. But, but, you could pre-discuss and then you could go into a session with a policy committee. Yeah. And essentially, we would just be charging Jeff, you know, coming back with something to the board. But at least we'd have that discussion with Mr. Surtisio. I mean, I, but I'm just...